It's Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, 2:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners is called to order. Will you please join Mr. Trask in the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Our Father in Heaven, give us the power to clearly discern right from wrong, allow our words and actions to be governed thereby and by the laws of this land. We ask for your inspiration to strive in our endeavors to serve the public. We also ask that you direct us so that above all things we'll discharge our duties for the benefit of the people we serve. Thus we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor Hendricks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Here.
Commissioner Kerr.
Here.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried by two zero.
Next is proclamations. We have a proclamation this week. It's actually a week late, though we were not notified in a timely manner. So this proclamation is for the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1st through May 7th, 2022. Whereas the office of professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of professional municipal man clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the cities and local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on all functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and other annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, John B. Hendricks, Mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, do recognize the week of May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Clara Van Bargen, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you so much, Clara.
Oh, you're welcome. And I'd like to say thank you to my executive assistant, Laura Hoot-Huley, and she helps make it all happen every day. She's doing great. And I really appreciate her, and I appreciate all of you in helping me to do my job better every day.
Thank you. Thanks again. The next proclamation is the proclamation of the city's 75th anniversary. Whereas on Monday, May 5th, 1947, in the recreation hall of the Bay Palms Trailer Park on 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach, Florida, was incorporated as the town of Madeira Beach. Whereas on May 14th, 1947, the first town council meeting was held at the real estate office of George Gaines at 141st Avenue and Gulf Boulevard. Whereas the town of Madeira Beach and the town of South Madeira Beach were consolidated, forming the city of Madeira Beach on August 8th, 1951. A straw poll was taken at the meeting with the city of Madeira Beach creating a council manager form of government. Whereas the city purchased 24 acres of property for the civic center in 1958, dedicated a building in 1965, dedicated the Gulf Beaches Library in 1969, and all of these transforming Madeira Beach into the wonderful beach community to live as well as a dynamic tourist destination. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the many accomplishments of the city of Madeira Beach, a city that has seen many changes in its first 75 years that will always be two miles long and a smile wide of paradise. The future and the past come together this year to celebrate our rich history. Now therefore, I, John B. Hendricks, Mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, do recognize the year of 2022 as well as the day of May 5th, 2022, as the city of Madeira Beach 75th Year Celebration. I encourage all residents, businesses, and visitors to join Madeira Beach in celebrating our 75 years as a city. Next, we have a presentation by Santa's Angels. Good afternoon. How are y'all?
Good afternoon. First, let me introduce, I am Michael Brown. I am the president of Santa's Angels. To my right is Barry Scar, who is one of our board members, and Tony Scar, also one of our board members. And we are quite honored to be here today to present an award to not just one person of the city and town of Madeira Beach, but to the entire team that donated their time and efforts in helping out children in need. And this was not done because they had to, it was done because they wanted to. And the staff here at the city of Madeira really stepped it up this past year, and we wanted to recognize each and every one of them. And this past year, you collected over 250 new toys to help needy children within Pinellas County. You also collected four or five big, huge bags of food, which also helped families. But in addition to that, your team here decided that they were going to adopt about 25 children, some of these children who have never had a Christmas. And for their efforts and their time and their donation, we were able to give them Christmas this year. We are now celebrating our 35th year of here in the Madeira market. We've helped over 15,000 kids. We are 100% volunteer. We have donated over 70,000 toys. Our whole mission to begin with was to bring Christmas to the kids who are in need of Pinellas County owning. The last couple of years are, we have expanded into a food program, into a mattress and bed program, to a backpack program. So we have really expanded, and we are 100% volunteer. Every cent that we get in goes back into our mission. But we are, we would like to present this award to the city, and the headline on it is that you made a difference. To the city of Madeira Beach, the employees and staff, the support, the dedication of giving back to the community, and the toy drive, food baskets, Santa's Angels Appreciation Award 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
While we are on that same subject, I see Mr. Carnes out there. I know you have done a lot of work with Santa's Angels, and you also, so I want to thank all you and all the residents for all they have done for that group. Thank you. Okay, next is public comment. If there's anyone that would like to make public comment on anything that is not on the agenda, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak.
Bill Gay, 423 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach, Florida. I have some concerns about the amount of litigation that the city is engaged in right now. Seems like there's a crisis here. There are two schooner cert cases out there, and the attorney for one of those cert cases has admitted that the application that they filed and was approved by the city is ineffective. That is, it's defective. The cert cases involved three developments that were approved, one in July of 2021, and another in January, and another one in February of 2022. There are two sunshine cases also facing the city. The one involves the appointment of Tom Trask to the city commission. It was an in the shade appointment. That's been going through the court since October of last year. In addition to that, when depositions were held, there was some mix-up in who was going to represent what counsel, what lawyer was going to represent the persons who were accused of violating the Sunshine Act. So the city had retained through its insurance policy, the municipal attorney to represent the people at the deposition, he was at the depositions. Apparently, Trask's partner, Dagno, petitioned the city manager to allow him to represent several of the people who were involved in the sunshine case. We have a situation where we possibly have two lawyers being paid to represent the same people. Now, when Gomez made the commitment to retain Dagno, it's not something he had the authority to do. And Dagno has already billed the city $5,000 for his representation. Seems like there's also a conflict of interest in what occurred here. There's also a Florida Bar Association complaint that's been filed against Trask. That involves illegal clauses that were put in the development applications for the schooner, the three development applications. And there's also a potential lawsuit regarding the Caddy's Restaurant and the way in which the Kitty Stewart Park was handled by the city. What's disturbing to me about all of this, that I've talked to a couple of the commissioners about it, and no one seems to know anything about these cases. Typically, within a jurisdiction, litigation reports would be prepared and presented at commission meetings. I don't know that any such thing has occurred in this jurisdiction here. All this stuff has been under the carpet someplace and not have made available to the commissioners, apparently, and not also made available to the public. I have a couple of recommendations. The city needs a permanent city attorney. Trask has been the interim attorney for two years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Next is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson. Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried by two zero.
Next is public hearings. First is Ordinance 2022 dash zero eight, C1 Zoning District, second reading. Mr. Trask.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Ordinance 2022 dash zero eight, in ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 110, Zoning, Division 5, C1 Tourist Commercial, Section 110-256, definition, purpose, and intent, Section 110-257, permitted uses, Section 110-262, maximum building height, Section 110-263, maximum lot coverage, Section 110-265, special requirements of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of Ordinance 2022 dash zero eight by title only.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. The city was recommending continuation of this item. The commission had decided to refer it back for a further discussion at the workshop. You did have that discussion, but by the time you had decided what you wanted to do or made recommendations, at any rate, it was too late to get it onto this agenda. So it was not advertised, it doesn't have any changes in it. So we recommend it be continued to the next, next regular meeting.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Just need a motion to continue it. What is the next meeting you would like it scheduled at, Lynda?
The next regular meeting.
Clara, do we have that date?
The Wednesday, June the 8th?
Yeah, June the 8th.
Wednesday, June the 8th.
So Mayor, I would suggest there would be a motion to postpone or continue this matter until June the 8th, regular commissioner meeting.
I'll make a motion to continue the discussion on Ordinance 2022 dash zero eight to the June 8th regular meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do we need to have public discussion on this, Mr. Trask?
I thought the comment would be appropriate before you-
Is there any public comment on this before we move forward? City Clerk, will you call the roll?
May I make a comment before? Or is that before the motion?
Well, a motion has been made. We're ready for a vote on it.
Okay, that's fine.
But you can- Go ahead.
I just wanted to, it's come to my attention that there's two ordinances that have to do with, that have to do with re-establishment after an involuntary loss. And it was brought up at the workshop, basically, that if a hurricane came through, or if you lost a building involuntarily, that you could not replace it as is. You'd have to replace it per the new ordinance. More than one person said that during our discussion. I think even Mr. Hubbard was concerned that he wouldn't be able to build back, even with the setbacks. But I wanted to, as far as your discussion, it states that it can be, in the event of any residential hotel motel structures damaged, is greater than 50% are destroyed, and I'll paraphrase, it can be restored to the same square footage with existing the day immediately preceding the damage. And it goes on. And then, I'm sure you'll mention these. So it's one, Section 110-95 and 110 dot dash 96, that I'd like to bring into the discussion. And that really goes with most of the zoning ordinances that are on the agenda today.
Yes, it does. It does allow them to be built back on the same footprint. If they take advantage of the redevelopment, it has to be the exact same footprint. But it does also require they meet all floodplain requirements, which would mean that the use of the ground floor that may be currently open and built to previous standards would now have to be built to floodproofing standards. Increases the cost of the redevelopment. It also does not address actual impervious surface and things of that nature, where it still need to meet conditions for that, and for drainage in particular.
Well, I knew, I knew that it had to do with FEMA.
Mm-hmm.
But, so there was requirements, we either have to be floodproofed or razed, exactly the way you're stating. But it's my understanding that the impervious surface ratio would not be impacted, setbacks would not be impacted.
The impervious surface ratio is not listed as things that could be guaranteed to be replaced. What we would do, obviously, if someone has a lot of surface covered, is work with them, hopefully, to get their drainage improved, because although they can build back and they also have to meet, or probably get credit from the SWIFTMOT for the amount of drainage, if there are ways to improve the drainage, especially for water quality, we would encourage them to do that and work with them on that.
My intent here is just to bring it up at one next, at our next meeting and prior.
Well, we've workedshopped this, and we've had a motion and a second. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried by two zero.
Next is Ordinance 2022 dash zero nine, C2 Zoning District, second reading. Mr. Trask.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Ordinance 2022 dash zero nine, in ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 110, Zoning, Division 6, C2, John's Pass Marine Commercial, Section 110-286, definition, purpose, and intent, Section 110-291, setback requirements, Section 110-292, maximum building height, Section 110-294, impervious surface ratio, ISR, Section 110-295, special requirements of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of Ordinance 2022 dash zero nine by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this item was approved by the plan board and then approved under first reading by the city commission. Is there any questions? There's no new presentation, there's no amendment, other?
I have no questions. Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
Bill Gay, 423 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach, Florida. I have comments on the impervious surface ratio changes, that you're, you're going to make them less favorable to draining these sites. One of the problems with John's Pass Village right now, there's very little pervious surface there. There's very little porous material there, so that during storms and so forth, you had a lot of, you have a lot of runoff there. I think you need to keep a better ratio of impervious surface to provide for the proper drainage within that area. Impervious surface is not something that has anything to do with development. It's all with protecting the environment here. And we live in a very fragile environment in that we're a barrier island. So it's important to maintain the ability of whatever you're putting down there on the, on the surface, that it will allow some retention of water and not just be a buildup of large water on the surface. We already know that we have certain streets, and I don't know if that's in John's Pass or not, that are flooding here during high water or heavy rains. Those problems are going to get worse as time goes forward, and it doesn't make any sense, I think, to reduce the regulation regarding the impervious surface areas. Thank you.
So as someone who-
Please state your name and address.
Captain Dylan Hubbard from Hubbard's Marina, 170 John's Pass Boardwalk. As someone who makes money taking people out and enjoying our beautiful environment, the small area of John's Pass and any impervious surface ratio has no impact on the environment. I think we have a much bigger deal with drainage, or sewage leakage, and the drainage problems and streets flooding is because of the sand issue. And this commission is well aware of the issues we have with our F-dot drains being blocked with sand in the city drain. And the city works really hard to remedy that to the best of their ability. So John's Pass is what makes City of Madeira Beach's property tax stay low. We have a huge tourism draw. This area is important to my, my family, my family legacy, my, my son, my daughter, and the future of Madeira Beach, in my opinion. It's a huge draw. That's what makes Madeira Beach, Madeira Beach, in my opinion. And we are already cutting back from 100%. Most of those businesses are 100%. Now we're proposing 85. So any reduction beyond that, in my opinion, is unacceptable. So please, continue forward and pass this. Thank you.
So my name's Jason De La Cruz. I own 215 Boardwalk Place, Don's Dock. I'm going to book in this for him because I'm at the other end of the boardwalk. So I'm interestingly in a spot where I don't have any development, but this puts a significant constraint because of how small everything is on the boardwalk down there. And anything that I'd want to do puts me in a really weird position. And again, I'll reiterate the same things he said. We know this is the, the crown jewel in Pinellas County for that fact. And putting us in a position to keep getting struck down is crazy. And as far as flooding goes down there, it floods at my end when the sea rise comes up. It has nothing to do with stormwater drainage. It all runs right out there because it happens on my corner. We don't really have any issues in the past with that. So I just, I really hope everybody understands the value that this brings to this community in keeping things this way. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2022 dash zero nine, second reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
No.
Commissioner Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks.
Yes.
The motion carried four to one.
Next is Ordinance 2022 dash one zero, C3 Zoning District, second reading. Mr. Trask.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is Ordinance 2022 dash 10, in ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 110, Zoning, Division 7, C3 Retail Commercial, Section 110-316, definition, purpose, and intent, Section 110-320, minimum building site area requirements, Section 110-322, maximum building height, Section 110-323, maximum lot coverage, Section 110-326, special requirements of the Code of Ordinances- Section 110 dash 326 special requirements of the code of ordinances of the city of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2022 dash 10 by title only.
Thank you. Director Portell?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is also a second reading. It was passed by the Plan Board and again by the Commission on first reading. There have been no recommended changes. We are prepared to answer questions, so.
Okay. Any questions amongst the commission?
What part of the city is the C3?
This is primarily along the east side of Gulf Boulevard, in portions around the downtown area, mostly it's a kind of corridor along the Gulf Boulevard Commercial. And most of the activity we get in commercial redevelopment is along that area.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this? Yes, sir.
Bill Kearns, 410 150th Avenue, Madeira Beach. Right around the corner from here, we built the Madeira Del Mar condo building. One of the things we did there is keep everything within the codes that you have now. Part of that code allowed us to build three stories above parking. It wasn't defined as three stories over parking, but the height was determined by the base flood elevation and so many feet above that. I think it's very important in this area that you're talking about here, that you don't be concerned with the stories of the building, but you'd be concerned with the height above the base flood elevation. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2022 dash 10.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022 dash 11, C4 zoning district, second reading. Mr. Trask?
Mayor Commissioners, ordinance 2022 dash 11, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter 110 zoning division eight, C4 marine commercial. Section 110 dash 346 definition, purpose, and intent. Section 110 dash 352 maximum building height. Section 110 dash 353 maximum lot coverage. Creating a new section, 110 dash 354 impervious surface ratio ISR. Renumbering old sections 110 dash 354 and 110 dash 355 to be new sections 110 dash 355 and 110 dash 356 of the code of ordinances of the city of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2022 dash 11 by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is a second reading. It was approved by the Plan Board and then again by the Commission on first reading. We've recommended no changes.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion.
Okay, so this is the Marina, the city Marina, and it's the boatyard on the east side of Gulf Boulevard, and then a couple of condo buildings, and I think even a grocery store, a 7-Eleven store. So we're talking about small areas that we probably don't want to have a lot of, at least the boatyard, we want to protect any chemicals and things from soaking into the ground. So a low impervious surface ratio on this one, at least at that lot, we definitely don't want.
May I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I want to make it really clear that the impervious surface is not necessarily the way that we control drainage. They're obligated to maintain the first one inch of runoff, no matter what kind of impervious surface ratio. So if they're covered and it's all running up, because that first inch carries the toxins and the heavy metals and also the oil and solvents. So if they are covered heavily with impervious surface, they're going to have to have a drainage system that collects that, and a system underneath the ground filters it out slowly. The benefit to doing that, actually, is that if the storm is bigger than the one-inch or 25-year storm event, the retaining area does not overflow. If the retaining area overflows because the storm's too big, the layer of water that overflows is the one that carries all the solvents and the oil. Whereas in an underground system, once it's filled to the standard, it doesn't take any more water, but it does not overflow. And so those solvents and oils are actually contained. So we're very conscious of that. Actually, some of the Marina areas right now do runoff directly, and that's, we have to watch, and are constantly getting notified about activities that may be running things off, or they're doing activities they aren't allowed to do. So that's a really critical issue, but there's more than one way to manage the runoff.
Is there any public comment on this?
Jean Farnin, 574 Johns Pass Avenue. All of this, in theory, is very good, but this city really lacks enforcement. So you have a lot of trouble, and you get calls, and then nothing happens, and it continues. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that it looks good on paper, but enforcement is not happening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion on 2022 dash 11?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2022 dash 11.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
No.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried four to one.
Next is ordinance 2022 dash 12, carports in R3, second reading. Mr. Trask?
Mayor Commissioners, ordinance 2022 dash 12, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter 110 zoning article six, supplementary district regulations, division four, accessory structures. Section 110 dash 474, R3, medium density multifamily residential zones. Section 110 dash 480, maximum size in R1, R2, and R3 zones. Of code of ordinances of the city of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2022 dash 12 by title only.
Thank you. Director Portell?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is a second reading. It originated as a City Commission referral to address some issues of, actually, carports that weren't technically allowed by their size throughout the community, especially in the R3 district. There's no recommended changes since this was approved by the Planning Commission and the City Commission on first reading.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the commission? Any public comment? Is there a motion on ordinance 2022 dash 12?
I'll make a motion to pass 2022 dash 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022 dash 13, yard regulations, open sky requirements, second reading. Mr. Trask?
Ordinance 2022 dash 13, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter 110 zoning article six, supplementary district regulations, division two, lot yard height and other site area regulations. Section 110 dash 427 yard regulations, open sky requirements of the code of ordinances of the city of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2022 dash 13 by title only.
Director Portell?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, thank you very much. This is second reading, and so it was approved by the Planning Commission and then approved by the City Commission on first reading, and addresses some issues of confusion within the code as to definition and adds columns in as a garden ornament, along with some setback in use requirements.
Thank you. Floor is open for discussion.
Okay, so this is just allowing columns in the backyard and for houses that are raised or things that kind of think was intent, we're allowing sidewalks and stairs to be infringing some of the setbacks a little bit.
The walkways, stairs are not going to be able to go in the setbacks, no. But before, it specified that only certain things were considered accessory, and yet some things like walkways and such were regulated elsewhere and mentioned elsewhere. So just to clarify, that all of that type of accessory structure, it's considered a structure by the building code, is allowed within the code and is regulated individually in their own sections of the code.
Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion on ordinance 2022 dash 13?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022 dash 13 yard regulations.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried five to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022 dash 14, R3 zoning district, second reading. Mr. Trask?
Ordinance 2022 dash 14, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter 110 zoning division four, R3, medium density multifamily residential. Section 110 dash 226 definition, purpose, and intent. Section 110 dash 230 minimum building site area requirements. Section 110 dash 231 setback requirements. Section 110 dash 232 maximum building height. Section 110 dash 233 maximum lot coverage. Section 110 dash 234 impervious surface ratio ISR. Section 110 dash 236 special requirements of the code of ordinances of the city of Madeira Beach, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2022 dash 14 by title only.
Thank you. Director Portell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This is a second reading. It was approved by the Planning Commission and then also approved by the City Commission on first reading. It addresses the R3 district and various things. Some of it is reorganization, because some of the issues didn't show up in the right place in the code and were confusing. And then the same issues as were addressed elsewhere in the other ordinances.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's been brought to my attention that section 110 dash 93, which is not this, suggests that R1 and R2 would allow a building to be, or a residential structure, to be elevated at the same footprint that it currently has. But it's not allowed in R3. Is that intentional, or is that, and does it apply to what we're doing here? Because we're talking about setbacks in R3.
Right. And the setbacks are a little bit, it's a different situation in that redevelopment section. There are regulations on duplex, triplex hotels, motels, and things, and those are largely inside the R3 district. So any redevelopment would not guarantee them the exact same setback and other issues like that. They would still have to come back and meet existing setbacks. We've only had one situation where someone tried to use that. It was in an R2 district, and they had to go for a variance because of the size and shape of the land. But typically, without a reason for variance, they would have to come to existing setback requirements.
But there are single-family homes in R3?
Yes. R3 is separately regulated, and a single-family home is addressed differently and under redevelopment and catastrophic, you know, rebuilding, things like that. So dealing with single-family, wherever it is located, would have the benefit of that redevelopment regulation.
Is it something that we need to address at a different time?
Well, if we're going to address that...
Because the way I understand it, only R1 and R2 is listed in that section 110 dash 93.
Well, we'd have to take that section up. So let us come back to you with that. The commission wants to look at that.
If you could.
Yeah, if there's any kind of conflict we want to know about it, we'll bring it back and go through that separately.
Please, thank you.
Any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass 2022 dash 14.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
No.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried four to one.
Next is ordinance 2022 dash 15, proposed amendment to the city charter, section 4.8, induction of board of commissioners into office meetings, first reading, and public hearing. Mr. Trask?
Mayor Commissioners, this is ordinance 2022 dash 15, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, submitting to the electors of the city of Madeira Beach, a proposed amendment to the city charter, section 4.8, induction of board of commissioners into office meetings to provide that the first meeting of each newly elected member of the board of commissioners for induction into office shall be at the first regular board of commissioners meeting following the election and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2022 dash 15 by title only.
City Clerk?
This item was discussed at the April 27, 2022 VOC workshop meeting, and the consensus of the board was to bring forward an ordinance for the city of Madeira Beach electorates to vote on, requiring that each newly elected member of the board of commissioners for induction into office be held at the first regular board of commissioners meeting following the election. And I had pointed out at that meeting the different problems that we had or issues that arose during that time. Now, last year, of course, we was fortunate not to have an election, so we didn't really endure anything like that, but we saw it firsthand this year. And it was really tight on the clerk's office. There's a lot to prepare for and everything. And it's, to me, it's not fair on the candidates that win as well. It should be an event that they invite their family to and have a real nice time at the regular meeting, the same way as the outgoing commissioners of receiving their plaque. And the ceremonial parts, I think, should be held at the regular meeting, and also it gives us time. And swearing in the commissioners would go hand in hand with when their terms start. Then there's no gap, just in case we have a meeting and we're only stuck with three commissioners to attend.
That makes sense to me. Floor is open for discussion.
I just have a question. At the workshop, I was, I was under the impression that we had planned to induct the new board at the next meeting.
Right, regular meeting.
No, at the next meeting. Regular, the word regular was to be taken out. As I'm reading what was presented to us today, my interpretation is that they would not be inducted until the following month at the next regular meeting. So it's, I'm either reading this wrong or understood it wrong.
Well, the city attorney had suggested that at the last meeting, and we had talked about it, and I explained what we go through and everything, and it was my understanding... And it was my understanding that the consensus was to bring it forward as I had written it. But that's up to you all, how you want to do it.
Yeah.
This is, this purpose of bringing the ordinance forward and a public hearing done on it.
Right. I mean, personally, I would prefer to see it at the next meeting with, if that's a workshop, great. If it's a regular meeting, great. Whatever the next meeting is, if you, if it can be done.
We have, the election, it used to be the second, most time, second Tuesday in the month, but we had to do it when the elections office does it, which is the third week, usually the third week sometimes. And then whenever they get done with their certification, and we may not have time, time to do any of that the following week, you know?
I think that was part of the discussion was that there are time constraints between the election and particularly what, like what you had, Commissioner Kerr, where it went for a recount and being able to do it at the next meeting, which would be a workshop. And because of time constraints, it just wasn't feasible. And that's why we discussed taking it to the first regular meeting.
And also at a workshop, you can't vote, you can't appoint your, your vice mayor.
Right. And that was brought up in the workshop and Mr. Trask suggested that that's, so you might have to go a few weeks without a vice mayor, but that's not, I was just rereading the minutes and that's the way I thought it was to be presented.
I agree with Ray. I thought it was the exact same way that Ray is, Ray is planning it out. But I think then we went to the idea that why wouldn't we after the workshop do a special meeting just for that? You know, let's maybe, maybe do something along the lines of, so that we're not throwing everybody into the fire. I mean, because that's kind of what happened at the first meeting.
Right.
Fifteen, twenty things on there. No, I totally agree with you. I think that, I kind of got lost in this too when I was reading it because I think we, when we sat here, we agreed it would be the first meeting, but then saying, well, workshop probably wouldn't have been the right idea, but maybe having, once Clara is ready, we don't have to plan the special meeting until we're ready to do it, right? I mean, we could, well, we had twenty-four hours, right, Tom?
We just need to follow the normal notice requirements to call the special meeting to do that. So if you took out the word regular, you could have that special meeting.
Yeah, I'm all for that. I think that's, that's the best way to do it. This way we get indoctrinated, they get all their material and then they're ready to go by, by the regular first meeting. We, all the pomp and circumstance is terrific, but let's get that out of the way beforehand. We'll get down to business at the first regular meeting. Just my thought.
So I think when I was sworn in was on the 31st, I believe, 30th, 31st, and then, then we came in and had a special resolution on COVID. So, so maybe the route to go is to push a special meeting towards the end of the month of the election to where it gives the city clerk time to get organized and get what you need.
We already have, it's already in there to do it at the end of the month, by, by the end of the month, you know, in which election is held. That's already there. But to take it out, we still would have to take it before the voters in November if we want it to be resolved by the March election in 2023, just in case, so that we don't go through the same issue.
But am I understanding what's written, that they would be inducted in the same month that they were elected?
You can keep it the same, but if you're going to take out the regular?
Yeah, take out the regular.
It would have to go to the voters.
Right. Take out regular and be inducted.
And just push it to a special meeting.
Five months then.
It's your choice.
I'm happy either way. Would you like to take this to the next workshop?
Be fine.
I'd say we talk about it, because I'm still confused because you're right, didn't we, these, the gentleman down the end here got sworn in at a workshop, right?
A special meeting right before the workshop.
Special meeting right before the workshop.
And they had to immediately leave.
And then they had to leave. But if they're already sworn in, why couldn't they have participated in the workshop?
That was, that was my point.
Yeah.
Because there's another section of the charter, which the first, your first meeting is at the regular meeting following the election, which is April.
That's my point, though. Why not be inducted and be able to participate in that meeting? I mean, it was mentioned in the write-up here that we both had other things to do that evening, but really, I can only speak for myself, we had people in town. I had no obligation to be here. If I did, I would have been here.
Well, correct.
Yeah.
And we moved immediately.
My feelings about it were, if it doesn't provide the city clerk enough time to prepare, I don't know that that would prevent us from participating in the workshop. I mean, maybe we don't have our cards or our name tags, but I felt like I would have liked to have been sworn in and participated as soon as I was sworn in. So if it means I have to do it, you know, without a name tag or whatever, I know there's a lot that goes on. I was, I know there's a lot of preparation, but I feel like I would have, it would have been more complete if I had participated as soon as I was sworn in.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, if you're not participating in the workshop, what we're voting on in the next meeting is usually covered in the workshop before, so if you weren't here, so you guys are kind of shooting blind, so I.
Workshop would have been a nice way to ease myself in.
Absolutely. I agree.
Let's, I'd say, I mean, we still got a little time, right, Clara, before it has to go on a, on a ballot, right?
Correct. My ballot language has to be to the elections office the first week of August.
Okay. So I, let's put, let's push it to a workshop. Let's get the wording right on and figure it out.
Correct. And then we could do the first reading in June and then the second reading in July and that'll work perfect. And also later on, on the agenda, there was, there was a charter amendment that was discussed last year that was mentioned for me to bring it back for another discussion, so we can talk about both at the same time, all depending on.
And just to add, the section that Commissioner Kerr just said is up on the screen here, it's under a different section of the charter. It stipulates when your term begins. Your term begins at the next regular meeting. So that section, that's why currently the other section of the charter states that the induction will take place in March, the same month as the election, or by the end of the same month of the election, meaning March. But then you're not, your term doesn't begin until the next regular meeting. So we can, if it, from what I've heard, it sounds like you would like for the induction to occur in March, as soon as we have the results and as soon as we are ready, the clerk and et cetera were ready. And then you, your term begins when you are inducted, which is normally how, I mean, typically some elected offices are, but that's how you would like it to be worded?
Yes, that's the intent.
And so we need to change two sections of the charter in order to do that. This one in front of, the one up on the screen, where that your, the term begins upon induction or whatever the language would be. And then the other section, we would remove the word regular from meeting.
Right.
But we can discuss it at the workshop.
Yes. We'll just bring it two ways for you to make it easier to relay and so there's no confusion.
So Mayor, my advice to you would be if there would be a motion to continue, it would be a motion to continue to a date certain of June 8th, that you could have your workshop meeting in between and then you'd have this ordinance back before you so that we don't lose track of this particular one. If we need to amend it or otherwise add something else to it, we can, we can follow up from there. The other option, of course, would be just to vote this down today and then we'll start from new.
Well, we, and we probably need to move it to the workshop, or move it to the next meeting and to the workshop also, so we can have some discussion on it and decide what route we want to go. Is that acceptable?
Yes, Mayor, you can send it to a workshop, but then they have the, the idea to the workshop, the issue to the workshop, but the ordinance to June 8th.
Yes. Okay.
I'll make a motion to move.
Let me ask for a public comment first. I'm sorry. Please. Any public comment on this?
Bill Gay, 423 150th Avenue. I guess my concern was that when they did the induction for the people as pastime, the two new members, there were only three people here on the dais, that the people who were not elected or chose not to run were not, not on the dais up here. So you kind of had a rump session. It just seemed that there was a disconnect in how this timing all took place, that although two commissioners were gone, we were operating with three commissioners. You could have a situation where you might only be operating with two commissioners for a period of time, as long as a month. So it seemed to me that you'd want to bring the new people on sooner rather than later, not waiting for the regular commission meeting the next month. It seemed like a smoother transition would do, you know, move the, the action part of what they're able to do much closer to when you do the induction and eliminate that gap when you only have two or three commissioners.
I'll make a motion to move.
Jean Farnin, 574 Johns Pass. I know you really don't want to listen to what I have to say anyway, but it's okay. Because of, of the change with, with the Board of Supervisors, where you had to change things, where everything is, is kind of confused now, can't you just, when there is an election and there are changes in the board, you know, once that you get the election ratified by the supervisor of elections, have sort of a tentative meeting that could be canceled to induct new commissioners and then get things started and then, then really, you know, swear them in at that time? I mean, because it just, there was such a gap here at this election and the gap is caused by the changes of going with the Board of Elections. So it just makes sense to try and look for every, every consideration where you don't have that gap again. Thank you.
Mayor, just to clarify, that was in the charter. So we couldn't, Clara, that was changed when? Two or three years ago?
Was, it was voted on in 2019.
Right. So it was, the charter was changed to the current date. So we were, again, following what was in the charter. That's why we're bringing it up, because it caused the issues that came up.
Okay. Thank you. Now, yes.
I'll make a motion to move ordinance 2022-15 to the June 8th, 2022 meeting.
I'll second that.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carry five to.
Okay, next is unfinished business. First is Resolution 2022-05 Board of Commissioners Policy Handbook. We went over this.
Do you want me to read the resolution title?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So this is Resolution 2022-05, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the Board of Commissioners Policy Handbook, repealing Resolution 2021-01 and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2022-05 by title only.
We went over this at the last workshop. And as I remember, there were no changes to go into effect, everyone?
There was one, Mayor.
Was there one?
We added some language in, under commission conduct with the public, under, in public meetings, we added the words, only use city-issued electronic devices on the dais and/or in a public meeting. So we wanted to make sure that it was clear that you could only use those city-issued electronic devices and you have to refrain from using the personal electronic devices.
Yeah, well, we had, I know we had a clause in there about using personal devices in there.
We just added some verifying, additional verifying language to address that to make it absolutely clear. So that, that is in this revised rules of procedure. That was the only change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussions? Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2022-05 VOC Policy Handbook.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Next is software licensing agreement with Eclarian LLC. May? Yes.
Oh, just going to go forward with the item.
Okay. Yes, please. Mr. Trask?
Well, this agenda item is with regard to the software license agreement with Eclarian LLC. This has been workshopped. It's coming back to you for your consideration. In the memorandum that was prepared by the city manager, he, he provides the background and discussion relative to this software program and the expenses related to it. Staff is recommending approval of the software license agreement with Eclarian LLC. And of course, Andrews here, if there are any questions, then I'm sure that the city manager will be able to answer them as well.
I had some concerns originally. I think I'm fine with them now that Mr. Gomez has clarified some things and, and has put his blessings, so to speak, on the, on the program. I think there are a couple of bugs that need to be worked out and I guess that's in the process right now. Is that correct, Mr. Loughlin?
Correct. Yep.
I have no other questions. Is there any public comment? If I got a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the software licensing agreement with Eclarian LLC.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carry five to zero.
Next is staff reports. Jay, have you got anything for us? Okay. Nice job last Saturday. The band rocked, the food rocked, and those were some of the best fireworks I've seen us have. So, and as Jay mentioned to me, those fireworks were $10,000 as opposed to the $30,000 we normally spend at the Fourth of July. And I'd like to see us discuss at a workshop, doing that fireworks show three times a year as opposed to doing one huge show on the Fourth of July. So maybe that's something we could put on the workshop to discuss. That was, I saw fireworks that night that I haven't seen before. It could have been the dock was just on fire. I don't know. Next is the city manager's monthly report.
And Mayor and Commissioner, the report, which is included in your packet, as the mayor mentioned, and we've had lots of events, activities, both part of our 75th anniversary, but just annual events, such as the King of the Beach Fishing Tournament. In addition, because usually April weather is obviously quite good, we've had thousands and thousands of visitors to our city, but, so it's been obviously quite crowded in the sand and in addition to having all the events. As we continued throughout this past month, we, obviously staff continues in our daily operations, beautification, maintaining our infrastructure. We have, we began providing a little bit more information about our current construction projects. Right now, I think is most, certainly folks that live on or near or adjacent to 140th, there is the road restoration project essentially that due to damage caused by a utility contractor, Frontier Communications, a few months. a utility contractor, Frontier Communications, a few months ago. That is required that we, in essence, reconstruct the entire section of 140th from Island Drive to up to Pruitt, or where 140th changed its name into Pruitt. So that includes restoring the fill, compacting, and taking out and putting in on new stormwater infrastructure. So it's, that's why it's taking a couple of months to complete all of that. We currently have detours set up. We've heard from residents. We understand it is a pain, a bother. We apologize for that. We're working as best as we can, as fast as we can. We had a delay with some of the delivery of the materials. But we are, with our contractor, hoping to complete that in by the middle of June. So just a little bit more than a month to get all of that restored. Frontier Communications will pay the cost of that entire restoration because it was their contractors that caused the problem. You can see a few, as we issue this notice or we have, and we're updating it at least every other week just to show what projects are happening, whether they're FDOT projects or neighboring or other private projects that may be impacting traffic, or one that we have to correct, such as a large pothole that opened on 148th. I mentioned in our update, in addition to, the report contains the data, statistics from most, from just about all our departments, from fire to marine activity to parking revenue, some additional information that can be helpful for residents. I don't, we have been hosting the Barrier Island Government Council meeting here, although we were the actual host city, the most recent meeting. But I, when I asked a few residents if they were familiar with the Big C, I got lots of interesting responses. But interesting that not everybody was aware that there's essentially a group, an organization, a coalition, a collaboration among all the Barrier Island communities, the cities from St. Pete Beach up to the big city up north, just north of Bel Air Beach. And we work to address common issues, look for common solutions, whether they be for transportation, emergency management, sea turtle issues, lighting issues, et cetera. So more information can be found on barrierislandscouncil.com. Just for folks who may not have been aware that that is out there and that we have been an active participant, I believe, since that council was founded. Again, we list a few, again, our upcoming projects. We completed the, our contractor completed the surveying for the beach groynes, re-nourishment or work. And we're also doing engineering work for the roads in Area 3 and Area 5, for those roads that will be milled and resurfaced, if not later this year, most likely. And of course, we're preparing our budget for fiscal '23. We will be having a budget workshop in two weeks from today, very preliminary as to what our fiscal '23 operating and capital budget might look like. As has been mentioned, lots of events. I continue to be very, obviously, excited and impressed by the number of events for a small city that we do have. And certainly, Jay and his staff do a wonderful job, as well as all the departments that help out, from public works, sanitation, to fire, to even the Pinellas County Sheriff to provide the safety and security for all of the events. Our market in Madeira ways nearing the end. We have two more Wednesdays after today, and then it'll return in November. However, we may be, they expressed, they provided a request that they would like to have a once-a-month market during the summer. So possibly to the second or the third Wednesday, but just one Wednesday a summer. So we'll see if they're able to do that. But that was a request that I received very, this week, actually. So we will bring that back and see if there's any interest in continuing that. Of course, a lot of our partners that participate have been participating in our 75th anniversary, from the Trash Pirates, we are currently, they received some funding through sponsorships to create a, kind of a logo that has our 75th anniversary logo attached to it. Sorry, I went right by it. There's the logo up on the screen. And they are currently giving away 70, well, I think we're down to about 35 or 40 buckets with their Trash Pirates logo and the city's 75th anniversary logo to help residents, interested residents and businesses that want to receive a trash picker and a bucket and a pair of gloves. And they can help us keep Madeira Beach as clean as it continues to be. So if anybody's interested for that, they're available here at City Hall, again, for residents and businesses. And just other upcoming events we're having this Saturday, a sea turtle nesting season expo here at City Hall this Saturday, May 14th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Have various speakers, including the folks that review the sand every day from the Clearwater Marine Aquarium, as well as some of our Trash Pirates will attending the Trash Turtles and likely the, I think the Alligator Wildlife Exhibit will, folks will be here as well. On the following Saturday, there is an exhibit that is opening up about the history of, the environmental history of Madeira Beach, titled "Madeira Beach on the Waves of Change." It's an exhibit that will be opening up at Heritage Village, and I believe it'll be there through the end of June, the exhibit. But it's being unveiled Saturday, May the 21st, at Heritage Village up in Largo. And the following Friday, the 27th, will be our final Friday music event at Johns Pass at the Bell Tower. We encourage folks to go out. Starts at 6:00 p.m. And on June, Wednesday, June 8th, before our 6:00 p.m. commission meeting, will be a turtle nesting beach cleanup as part of World Ocean Day, which will also be the, I guess, inauguration or revealing of the additional turtle streetlights that have been added on Gulf Boulevard near Archibald Park and also the county park up on 143rd off of Gulf Boulevard. So be happy to answer any questions. Again, there's a lot of data. It is sea turtle nesting season started last week. We encourage folks to, again, leave no trace. If you do dig holes or any other works of art on the sand or any other work, they please return it the way they are and dispose of all the trash in our trash receptacles. And please take all your belongings with you. Just, there's an update on existing projects throughout the city that are included in the report, a list of all our building permit activity, planning and zoning activity, number of permits and type issued, which, again, continues to remain, you know, steady, averaging in the 80s, the number of permits that are issued month after month. So the staff continues to be pretty busy. Our parking revenue also continues to do quite well. April, actually, March was the first month where we exceeded 400,000 in total revenue in one month in parking, again, at all the city lots and the on-street spaces. So again, any questions, please feel free to ask at any time. We continue to utilize, obviously, our Fire Marine 25, which went live on March 1st, continues to respond to calls. As you can see, not that many, which is good. The less, the better. But that is an exciting piece of equipment that we have available to assist. Happy to answer any questions.
I do have one, and that is undergrounding of Gulf Boulevard utilities. When is that going to start? Because...
So we've, the consultant that we have has advised, and we're working with Duke Energy, that we're hoping that that re, I think begins again in November, is the earliest that, now that we've been provided. But we're still following up with, again, their contractors to see when they can do, they've been, if you, Duke Energy repair vehicles have been out mainly changing out lights for now, but they're going to resume that undergrounding that seems to just have stalled from late last year until this year.
Yeah, because that's, as we talked about last year, that's something we wanted to go ahead and get wrapped up. So that was, that was a big question I had. And I noticed some of the, some of the lights on Gulf Boulevard, the turtle lights, were not replaced.
Some have not been yet, but they will be replacing all of them.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got.
I have a comment. I'm always quite impressed, Robin. This is quite a report, monthly, a lot of, lot of information. But I do have a request that if the, I believe it was ordinance 202005 with the slow-wake zone, any updates with the FWC? If there's no update, you know, just have that, you know, reached out. And if they do have questions, you know, just, it's been two years.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, next is agenda setting. We've got a presentation by the Trash Turtles for our May 25, 2022 regular workshop meeting. Trash Turtles' presentation, review commercial setbacks, 2022-06, Johns Pass Boardwalk and Village COP, discuss proposed amendment to city charter. We also, I think, want to discuss 2022-08 again. Yes. Anything else?
I don't know if it's an agenda setting or not, but I think we do need to address the interim attorney situation. That's also been two years.
Did you say the charter amendment, was that on your list?
There are actually two charter amendments. One I have put on here, and the other one on the swearing in.
2022-15. I just have a quick question. City Attorney Trask, is number three, the Johns Pass Boardwalk and Village COP wet zone, is that the wet zone discussion?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, okay, good. And since I haven't added anything in a long time, it looks like a short one. This is going to sound a little self-serving, but it's really not. I know that, you know, the mayor has a boat, and I'm sure where Mr. Kerr lives, he's probably got one too. And the guy to my left has a luxury yacht sitting out in his front yard. But...
On the locks?
I got a quick one in there, didn't I? You like that? There's something that's been bothering me for a while. And, like I said, it's going to sound self-serving, but it's really not. I've discussed it with our community policing officers. I have the ability to sell a beer to a crack, oh, God, I almost said crackhead on the dais, to somebody at 2:55 in the morning. But somebody going boating or going fishing in the morning at 6:00 a.m. or 7:00 a.m., I can't sell them beer because of the way our ordinance is written. I would just like some type of feedback from our police if we could somehow amend that. I mean, I'll give up the, I'm sure every other vendor or supplier of alcohol in this area would do the same thing. You can, we can shut it down at midnight for all, I think it's safer to do that if we can open it up again at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. I think it's, number one, it's safer. Number two, I think it serves more people and really serves our community a little better.
Good. So would you like that on the workshop?
I would, I would. I mean, I guess we'll need the, either Corey or Jared here to discuss it and kind of give them a little heads up and give them two weeks to kind of research it a little bit.
So discuss hours of alcohol sales.
Alcohol sales.
Okay. Is that it? Mr. Gomez, would you like to recap that? Be sure we've got everything?
So the items that were already on there, again, the presentation, the Trash Turtles, two ordinances, 2022-06, 2022-08. We'll have the Johns Pass Boardwalk and Village Consumption on Premises or the Wet Zone. We will have the two charter, proposed charter amendments, the one regarding induction and meeting, or first meeting of new commissioners, the second one regarding the district voting.
Okay.
We have, I'm sorry, I guess alcohol sales was just mentioned.
Yeah, discussion of alcohol, of hours of alcohol sales.
And the, what was it? And I had, did you want us to discuss fireworks, as you had mentioned earlier?
Um...
Briefly.
You know, probably we need to, Jay Hatch, we probably need to go ahead and discuss how we want to handle
We'll bring that.
fireworks for the Fourth of July. We probably need to do that at this next commission meeting, right? If we want to go that way on splitting it up.
We brought it up at the, at the April work session, mainly to discuss moving from Monday, July 4th to Sunday, July 3rd. At the same time, we, Jay presented the three quotes, three different vendors, and what we received, what those costs would be. I think in lieu of the fabulous show from last Saturday night, I mean, I understand, yeah, to maybe have, so have three small ones throughout the year instead of one big one for Fourth of July, although we had already, I think, signed the agreement for, Jay, for the one for July the 3rd, I think we did, based on the April work session.
Yeah. Through, excuse me, through the process so far, we've, we've got a commitment to the 3rd with the one bid that we did receive. So
Okay.
Discussion on that would probably be for the following.
Following budget year on how to do that. Okay. We'll just kick that can down the road, since we've already got it for the July 3rd. Okay.
Was the, was the interim attorney situation?
Did you want to add?
Was that on there?
I've got it on mine.
Discuss interim, the city, interim city attorney.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, one more item. Mr. Mayor, the, we will have to discuss the Duke Energy franchise agreement as well.
Okay. Okay, next is reports, correspondence, Board of Commissioners. Have you got anything?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to address something that one of our public speakers said. He, I think it was Mr. Hubbard, said that impervious surface ratio has nothing to do with soil erosion. And I just have to, I have to state that the Environmental Protection Agency and the National Geographic Survey implicitly connect impervious surface ratio to soil erosion, to soil erosion and the biodiversity and health of coastal barrier islands. That, that just, I feel like needs to be said.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The Gulf Beach Library Director has resigned. So there's a meeting on Monday to start planning on a replacement. I believe he has a job. He took a position somewhere else. So Mrs. Price will be busy with that.
Anyone else?
I mentioned to the city manager about just having the building department investigate the pervious pavers. As, right now, they're not approved, Jenny mentioned. And I'd like them to relook at that and bring that up for discussion. Not, it's not an agenda setting thing for next month or anything, but I'd just like to keep that ball rolling.
Okay. I do know that on a barrier island with the water tables so high, from all I have learned, impervious surfaces do not work. And that's why we did not go with, or pervious surfaces do not work. We discussed it regarding the Crystal Isle project, and it was determined that it was a big waste of money for the city to do that out there. So we can continue to discuss it. we can continue to discuss it. We've got one thing coming up on June 8th, and that is the dedication of, uh, the turtle lights. I know, uh, Representative Chaney will be here for that, Duke Energy will be here. Uh, I think the Trash Turtles, that's a part of that day, that's World Ocean's Day, as I believe, yeah. So, that will be an event that was moved, it was originally set for 6:00 p.m., which is the night of our commission meeting, so they moved it to 4:30 p.m. as far as the ceremony itself, to dedicate the lights and whatnot. So, if y'all would like to attend, come on out, we'll be over at Archibald Park. That's all I've got. Mr. Trask, have you got anything for us?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez, I think you've already filled us in on everything.
Just one final. We did update our rack card, rack card, for our 75th anniversary for the events remaining for this year, from this Saturday's event through December.
Great, thank you. Ms. Van Blargen, have you got anything for us?
I do not think so.
Okay. Thank you again for all your hard work.
Oh, you're welcome.
You deserved a week. In fact, since it wasn't, uh, since it didn't happen for May 1st through May 7th, we'll make it, we'll just make it, we'll make it, uh, Professional Municipal Clerk's Month. How's that?
All right, sounds good.
Okay, all right. Okay. Having no more business, this meeting is adjourned at 3:30 p.m.